You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marches for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening. Like to welcome you to the Monday, May 14th, 2018 City Council meeting. We'll ask at this time Pastor Sam Satchel from Covenant Love Church if you could join us at the podium. Pastor Sam? All right. Moving right along, we'll ask that all would rise for the invocation. We'll ask the council member and Pastor Bishop Larry Wright lead us in prayer. And after the invocation, we ask that you would please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for bringing us together to this session of the City Council and the community at large. We pray that you would be with us, guide us, help us to make wise decisions. God, for the betterment of this great city. Bless our mayor, our City Council, our staff, and every citizen of the great city of Fayetteville, North Carolina. As we go forth, God, be with us. Help us to unite for the betterment of the future of Fayetteville, North Carolina. In the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ, amen.
Amen. Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as for all.
It's time we have entered into our announcement section. Have presentation to the Child Abuse Prevention Plan Resolution be presented by Ms. Mary McCoy.
Do you want me to read the resolution up to the top or you haven't signed it yet so we'll just give the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm joined by Sharon Moyer of the Partnership for Children. We are both members of the SOAR Committee, which is Strengths in Overcoming Adversity Through Resiliency. Our Child Abuse and Prevention Plan is a culmination of the work that this committee has done over the last four years. Our goal is to reduce child abuse neglect by 90% by the year 2030. This plan was developed in partnership with Prevent Child Abuse North Carolina, the Partnership for Children of Cumberland County, the Child Advocacy Center, along with 26 other community organizations in Fayetteville and Cumberland County. In order to reduce child abuse neglect, this system-building effort will take a collaborative approach through two goals. Building the capacity of parents and prevention partners to understand, deliver, evaluate, and advocate for the prevention of child abuse neglect, and also to cultivate beneficial partnerships to create a shared language, build efficiency, and extend the reach of programs. The plan will use prevention science to guide community action by understanding risk factors, understanding the protective factors, and using evidence-based and informed approaches to serve families and a core set of metrics to track our milestones over time. This plan is based on the science of the ACEs Study and the evidence-based Protective Factors Framework, which includes five protective factors: social and emotional competence of children, parental resilience, knowledge of parenting and child development, concrete supports in times of need, and social connections. Our committee has three action teams. Those are parent engagement, community engagement teams, and our data team. We are the first community in the state of North Carolina to develop a plan to prevent child abuse neglect. Our plan is being used as a model for other communities in the state by Prevent Child Abuse North Carolina. We are seeking a resolution of support from the council. You will be joining 400 other individuals and agencies and groups in our community that have already signed a resolution of support of our plan. Thank you.
Ms. McCoy, thank you. Thank you for what you do. This time we'll also have presentation regarding...
Opioid House Bill, House Bill 662.
Ms. McCoy?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for what you do. At this time, we'll have a presentation regarding House Bill 662 presented by Ms. Jean Alexander.
Hello. Members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak on the need of increasing affordable access to healthcare to our state, especially the representative of my district, Mr. Moan, for your support in bringing this bill to the council's attention. Currently sitting in committee in our General Assembly is House Bill 662, also called Carolina Cares. This bill would close the gap in healthcare coverage for those who do not qualify for Medicaid or ACA subsidies. There are approximately 400,000 North Carolinians in this gap, and they aren't the only ones to feel its effects. Those of us with insurance pay higher premiums, and our more rural hospitals even close due to the burden of uncompensated emergency care for the uninsured. Of these North Carolinians without insurance, 30,000 are veterans. Many people incorrectly assume that our military always has coverage options, but the VA prioritizes those with disabilities, and TRICARE is only available to those who are active or have retired after a 20-plus-year career. Even if a veteran can get VA care for themselves, they may not be able to access insurance for the rest of their family. There are an estimated 12,000 veterans in North Carolina who would gain coverage through HB 662, 500 to 750 just in our county. In Fayetteville in particular, we have another major incentive to increase healthcare access. Our city was recently ranked 18th worst in the nation for opioid abuse, with 50 opioid-related deaths in 2016 alone. Our hospitals, justice system, law enforcement, and foster care systems are overwhelmed. Estimates place Cumberland County's contribution to the national economic cost between $700 million to over $1 billion, and Cumberland County's governments bear $40 to $80 million of that burden. Expanded healthcare access is a vital component to fighting the opioid epidemic. Emergency detox and three-day rehab results in an 80 to 90% relapse rate, while the most successful programs such as medically assisted treatment and 90-day detox cost $3,000 to $5,000 a year and $12,000 respectively, and are out of reach for most uninsured addicts. We not only benefit socially from the passage of this bill, but economically as well. Expanding healthcare coverage will result in, just in our county, 800 jobs, $370 million in increased business activity, and $1.9 million in increased tax revenue. Right now, there is money waiting in DC to match this expansion on a nine-to-one basis. The cost estimate to North Carolina in the short term would be equaled out almost immediately by these benefits, and in the long run, could double the rate of increase of our economy. Our legislators need a push to stop putting this burden of care for the uninsured on our hospital emergency rooms, and accept federal funds so that our state can have a healthier citizenry and improved economy. I've asked that the council sign a resolution in support of HB 662, Carolina Cares, and urge our General Assembly to bring it to the floor during their next legislative session, which starts this Wednesday, May 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, ma'am. In our consent agenda tonight, there is a resolution. If it passes and the mayor will sign that, we'll get you a copy.
Thank you very much.
Could Mr. Rob Stone meet Mayor Pro Tim at the podium?
Resolution and proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of our community. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees representing all levels of government who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, enhancing, and protecting the public works facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in our community to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs such as streets, sidewalks, solid waste collection, traffic, real estate, and stormwater management. And whereas the city of Fayetteville is safe, more efficient, and more aesthetically pleasing due to the work performed by the dedicated professionals of the Public Services Department. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the City Council and more than 208 citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of 20... the week, excuse me, of 21 through 27 May in the year 2018 as National Public Works Week. And witness whereof, Mayor Colvin has heretofore set his hand and calls the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 14th day of May 2018. Congratulations, Public Services Department.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. That was a very humbling proclamation. We had the Public Works poster up. Would like to bring everybody's attention to it again. This is an outstanding group of folks that work for the Public Service Department. And again, going through everything that went through here, they are a fantastic group. And just the amount that they're involved in on everything within the city every day and keeping everything moving forward. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Congratulations. At this time, would ask that there's Project Homeless Connect certificates of appreciation. I'll be meeting the following persons at the podium. Mr. Garen Goldsmith, Mr. Morgan Shelton, Ms. Maritza Goldsmith, Mr. Glenn Goldsmith. On behalf of Goldsmith &amp; Goldsmith, Mr. Jeffrey Ziegler, Ursula Brooks Shaw, Ms. Courtney Brooks, Kelly Paul Kennedy Brooks, and Teresa Anthony on behalf of Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say this project with the Homeless Connect and also those that have come to be a part of that, that sponsored this event did a great job in serving almost 80 to 100 citizens in that one day. In recognition of your hard work and dedication to individuals and families in need during the Project Connect project, May 14th, 2018. Courtney Brooks, Kennedy Brooks, Jaren Goldsmith, and Kelly Paul. These are students of high school. They did this project in the community and getting project points for their grade in doing community service. Let's give them a hand for a job well done. The organizations that sponsored this event, Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority, Ms. Teresa Anthony, came out with her staff, the Housing Authority, and helped many people on that day with questions as for emergency housing and things of that nature, and they were very thankful. Goldsmith &amp; Goldsmith, in recognition of your dedication and individual help for families in need. And we have Maritza Goldsmith of Goldsmith &amp; Goldsmith Accounting Firm. And also, last but not least, Heal the Land Outreach Ministries. And we have Deacon Jeff Ziegler to receive their certificates. Let us give these organizations a hand. If there need be any corrections on those certificates, we'll make those at a later date. And thank you so very much for all you do for our community. Is anyone from Anne Chestnut Middle School here tonight? All right, we'll recognize them at a later date. At this time, Mr. Mayor, we want to recognize the wife and family of retired Sergeant Major Marion White. Will you step forward, Ms. Benny White and the daughter of Sergeant Major Marion White? We felt like this was an honor. Sergeant Major had over 30 years of volunteer service for the community and the military. He passed on last Monday. And we want to recognize his military service and his service to the community for a great job of giving back to the community even after retirement. He helped numerous organizations. He was a carpenter, a builder, a contractor. And he just did work in the community, volunteered all the time. And we wanted to recognize him for his years of service to this community. Retired Sergeant Major Marion White. And to be receiving the award and the city medal would be his wife and his daughter, Ms. Benny White. Thank you.
At this time, I'd call on a council member, Jensen, to recognize our Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council member tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Tonight, I would like to introduce Demetrius Black. And he is a senior at Grace Creek High School. Is that correct? All right, so it's up to you now.
I would like to say, um, thank you for everyone coming out here tonight. Uh, tonight, um, is Senior Night at the FCYC office, where seniors are being recognized for their achievements, being with our organization. And I would like to say, um, some of our FCYC delegates are going to the last State Youth Conference this weekend in Goldsboro. Uh, this conference is based around the most diverse youth council, most outstanding service project, most outstanding council member, and scrapbook awards that are to be given at, uh, to various councils who win. In the past, um, we have been awarded the most diverse youth council, most outstanding youth council, and youth council most outstanding member. Our President Rebecca Mitchell is the President of the State Youth Council, and we also have another member, Constance Woods. He is the Secretary of the State Youth Council, and we also have J- Jordan Claiborne, who is the National Representative of the, for the Youth Council.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. I have a couple of announcements. I'll go to Councilmember Dawkins, Chris, and Art.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Tuesday, May twenty-second, uh, the Building Business Rally. Uh, primarily, uh, the focus has been Public Works Commission. I think Lexi Asopis is here, and I think I saw Mark Brown. Uh, but PWC along with the City of Fayetteville, the County of Cumberland, FTCC, uh, the Town of Hope Mills, Cumberland County Schools, and NCDOT, Fayetteville State University. Uh, lots of folks are involved, and it's going to be at the Horace Sis Gym at FTCC from three to seven. And in fact, what it's going to amount to is they're going to explain to you how to bid, uh, to do business with any of those entities. So, uh, those of you that want to do business with the city, the county, uh, PWC, or any of those other entities I mentioned, uh, that's a great opportunity from three until seven PM. And you can go to the website, uh, that they have is Fay, F-A-Y, bids, B-I-D-S, dot com. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Chris? Councilman Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next week is a very big week for our friends and neighbors next door at Fort Bragg. It's the Eighty-Second Airborne Division All-American Week. Do we have any former division troopers in the audience tonight? If you would, please stand. All-American Week's a great way to celebrate the heritage of the Eighty-Second Airborne Division and all those fine people that have served. It'll kick off on Monday with the, uh, annual division run. If you've never been on that, I've been on a couple of them. It's quite interesting. Seventeen thousand paratroopers will run up Long Street, uh, and it's a great spectacle. So, if you get a chance, go see that. On Wednesday, the division will have its annual memorial honoring those soldiers who lost their life in the last year. And then on Thursday, the big culmination exercise is the airborne review, and that's out on Sicily Drop Zone. If you've never seen that, it's a great opportunity. You can drive out there. They'll have transportation, designated parking that you can park your car, ride a bus out to the drop zone, and you'll get to see not only the division, it's usually about a brigade's worth of, of paratroopers, and that's a big jump, uh, but it's also a lethality exercise where you'll get to see some of the latest equipment that they use, and they'll do demonstrations for you out on the, uh, on the drop zone as well as static display. So, it's a big week for our friends and neighbors out of the, uh, at Fort Bragg, and I encourage you to participate in All-American Week.
Thank you, Councilmember Art. And just before we move into the approval of the agenda, as we're getting our announcements out the way, we ask all who are able to join, uh, Commissioner Evans and myself tomorrow at Second Missionary Baptist Church, seven PM, uh, to discuss or answer any questions that you may have regarding the District Two replacement process that the City Council has arranged. And so, I'll be there, and I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Commissioner Evans in the audience as an elected official. Welcome, uh, to the City Council meeting, sir. Item, uh, six point zero, five point zero is the approval of the agenda. Uh, Council, I'll look to you for action.
So be it, Ms. Mayor.
Have a motion by Councilmember Wright, is there a second, second by Councilmember Dawkins for the approval of the agenda? Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those present. And I did need to announce that, uh, Councilmember Hair, we actually, we would keep him and his family in prayer. Um, they're dealing with the illness of a family member, so he will not join us tonight. As we move to item six point zeros, the consent, uh, Council, I'll look to you for action concerning the consent.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mayor Protim. Is there a second? There a second on the approval? Councilman Dawkins? Uh, any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for votes. Madam Clerk, that is, one, two, three, four, six, seven, seven, seven to approve, one and opposed. Councilmember Art in opposition. Approval of the agenda. Moving right along to motion carries. Moving along to item seven point zero one, Airport Commission Twenty-Seventeen Annual Report to the City Council. Hello, sir.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, we thank you for this time giving us to make the presentation of the Airport Commission's Annual Report for calendar year two thousand thirteen. My name is Gene Vance. Um, I'm a Vice Chair of the Chair, the, uh, Airport Commission at the moment. I started flying out of the Fayetteville Airport about, uh, fifty years ago, so I'm very familiar with it. I saw the present terminal being built, and I consider this, uh, a reward for me to be a part, playing some minor role in this, uh, renovation of the terminal building at this time. I'm not flying much now. I'm almost mature, so I've sort of given it up. But the, the airport has obtained FAA entitlement for the terminal improvement project totaling one million, nine seventy-eight, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. They also received from, uh, an, the new North Carolina DOT funding for commercial service airports, and Fayetteville was awarded two million, two seventy-nine, three hundred and forty for calendar years two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And all of these funds have been allocated towards the terminal renovation for Part One. The concourse, the old concourse Alpha, has been torn down, removed, and the foundations are being poured at this time. Steel is being erected for the relocation of the TSA checkpoint. Work is also progressing on the installation of the stormwater drains and the duck bank. Conduits are installed in the new electrical room for the transformer and the emergency generator. In the years past, the airline service we had for, uh, the Fayetteville Airport, as with, uh, many of the others, the service was provided by turboprop aircraft and, and a jet aircraft mix. United and American both have converted totally to a jet service for the Fayetteville Airport. American has a mix of seating arrangements from fifty to ninety. They have fifty, seventy, and ninety. United has one seating capacity for their regional jet, and it is fifty. Under the Airport Commission Economic Development, the Commission has approved consolidated three-year lease for Sierra Nevada Corporation. We had, uh, several years that had gone by without any increase or anything on our hangar rates and tie-down rates, and the airport did a market study to get our rates more in line with the competitive airports, and almost all of the rates were increased. On the administrative side, the stormwater certification, uh, for the airport, for the annual inspection, the airport did pass it. And as addition to the administrative report, the airport has hired a marketing specialist that we badly needed. On the airline service, the statistics for the airline service is the total passenger inplayment and deplayment numbers increased eight one, eight point one percent over two thousand sixteen for a combined total of four hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight annual passengers. Forty-two one percent of that was for personal flying, thirty point three of that was for business flying, and twenty-five point four for military. If you've been to the airport, you know we have a USO facility there now for the military. It's very popular and that, and it's heavily used. In two thousand seventeen, it had a thirty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight visitors. Looking forward to two thousand nineteen, we're expecting to bid to Part Two for the new terminal, and expected to receive ten million in discretionary funding for FAA during the month of August. That concludes the report, unless you have questions.
Thank you, sir. Sounds like we're pushing things in the right direction out there. Mr. Whittit, want to give you our condolences too, sir? All right, Council, any questions regarding the annual report? Uh, Mr. Manager, do you need action to receive that, uh, that was this information or only? Thank you. Item seven point zero two, Annual Report from Joint Appearance Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having us here. My name is Johnny Lanthorne. I'm the Chair. Been the Chair for a few years now. I just want to give you a little update. I'm going to hit the highlights. I'm going to say I turned my eyes on. We heard some reports from the City of Fayetteville with the signed code revisions, retroactive landscaping, gateway corridor overlay districts, uh, placement of new gateway signs. Just some things that we touched on. We amended some bylaws so we could meet different days than we were before, so we could try to coincide with you guys if we needed one of y'all to show up at our meetings. We elected the officers for the tree board, uh, April the eighteenth, and we received the third phase of the tree inventory on July the fourteenth from the consultant that we, we have. We've been partnering with Cumberland County Schools for the last four years, I believe it is, to, for the Arbor Day ceremony. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, we planted a tree at JW Coon, and this past March, we planted one at EE Miller, and Councilman Wright was able to be there. Thank you for showing up. It meant a lot for us. We sponsored our ninth annual Community Appearance Award Program. We just started it out this, at the beginning of this month, and you guys in your packets have some of our brochures. So, we're asking y'all to reach out in your neighborhoods and find some nice properties and submit them, so we can do our thing. It was co-hosted with the Greater Fayetteville Apartment Association. We held our, we held our celebration at the Highland Country Club. Jack and City Tree Board, we considered tree replacement report from Downtown Fayetteville Alliance on September the nineteenth, and removed some large, a large tree on Franklin Street. We also received the City's Tree, City USA recognition. I think it was the fifteenth year that the city was recognized. And of course, the act, after-action review of the awards program. Again, some of the things that we're going, we're planning on doing for the next year will be some more tree board activities, the Arbor Day Program. Again, with Cumberland County Schools. We want to continue the Community Appearance Awards Program, strengthen our relationships with other organizations that's within the, um, city boards. And we're looking to attract members that are from various design fields, expertise in gardening, master gardener, and so forth. And we want to continue our public review of all the buildings and the landscaping and appearance. And that concludes to Jack.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for what you're doing for the community council. Uh, we need to, I need to have a motion to receive both the reports.
Mr. Mayor, motion that we receive, uh, the Airport Commission Twenty-Seventeen Annual Report and the Annual Report from the Joint Appearance Committee.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Is a motion, is there a second? A second by Councilman Dawkins? Uh, any discussion on the motion to receive both the reports? All those in favor? I mean, let's, Council, look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those present. Thank you. Item eight point zero is the public forum. Public forum is a time that any Fayetteville city resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy regulations, the forum will not last longer than thirty minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until the public hearing. So, when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you would come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then, when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, it's an indication you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, that means your time is expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the first speaker.
Mayor, we have twenty-seven speakers signed up for this item. The first speaker is Ms. Anne Kittinger.
So, uh, welcome, ma'am. And so, just, just before we get started, let's be mindful that we have twenty-seven speakers, we have thirty minutes allocated, so...
Now, you know, Mayor Colvin, I'm a school teacher, so I'm going to have a hard time with that, but I'll try. When I see the red light, I'll try to stop.
It wasn't directed at you personally, I just...
Anyway, good evening, Mayor Colvin. Councilmembers and fellow citizens. My name is Anne Kittinger, and I'm a retired schoolteacher, and I live with my husband, Paul, who is a retired Army Colonel. We have lived on Clifdale Road for eighteen years. We have a mother-in-law's cottage where my mother, Thiel Sanford, lived the last ten years of her life. When I went to my mailbox on April the eighteenth and found a letter from David and Karen Price, their homeowners on Clifdale, informing me that the state of North Carolina plans to build a four-lane divided highway with a large medium plus curb sidewalk and a bike lane, I couldn't believe it. The project could take sixty to eighty feet from the front yards of the homeowners on Clifdale, but I kept thinking that Clifdale is a totally residential area. Um, needless to say, the owners on Clifdale were upset about this project. When I thought about what I wanted to say, I thought about the email that my neighbor, Carol White, wrote me, and I know I can improve on it. So, with her permission, I would like to read it to you tonight. Mayor Colvin and councilmembers, I know that progress is a part of life, but the unbelievable realization that we could be losing our homes we worked so hard to acquire, and they could be taken away from us is heartbreaking. I venture to say that no one on this point nine tent mile stretch of Clifdale Road understands why anyone at DOT could possibly believe that widening the road would be worth spending over sixteen million dollars. How could that be a good steward of North Carolina taxpayer dollars? We have lived in this location for twenty-five years. We have no issue with the traffic flow. If I want to walk across the street to speak to a neighbor, I can. If the road was widened to four lanes, that would probably be impossible. On exit... On exiting the driveway, if a median is installed, I wouldn't have the option to go left. As far as I can remember, there has been no fatal crashes or pedestrian injuries. Looking at the other end of Clifdale Road, where the road has been widened, there have been several fatalities. I can think of one report stating that the accident happened from road racing. We certainly don't want this in our neighborhood. You know, just because there has been sixteen million dollars, oh, that's a red light, budgeted to widen the road, it doesn't mean that it can be allocated to another area that really needs improvement. When we travel down Clifdale towards Sky Bow, the backup seems to happen because of the traffic exiting from the All-American Freeway onto Clifdale Road, as well as the traffic coming off of Glensford Drive trying to get on Clifdale Road. Our biggest concern with the widening is our safety, such as getting out of the driveway, checking the mail, getting trash cans, whoops, is that my red light? Can I just finish? Thank you. Getting trash cans to the road, a petting, getting loose, the precious safety of our visitors. Then there's the devaluation of our property. I am praying for a happy ending for all of us here on Clifdale Road, along with the residents of Van Story and Murray Hills. The human factor does need to be considered. This project will affect a lot of lives in a negative way. It is with all sincerity and truthfulness that we feel this project needs to be halted. And just one quick question. If you came to the meeting tonight and you oppose this multi-lane project, if it were placed in front of your home, please raise your hand. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Eric Flynn. Mr. Eric Flynn. Our next speaker is Ms. Nancy Perry. Nancy Perry.
Madam Clerk, did we skip Speaker number three?
She called earlier this afternoon to withdraw.
Okay.
Hello.
How you doing? How you doing, Mayor City Council? My name is Nancy Perry. I live at five oh six Eaton Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm a manager of Subway. You know that I have, we have a building down here on the corner of Hay Street, five seventy-two. We have no parking. Our business concern is we have lost business because our customers can't come to us. They call us, they say we can't come because we have no place to get in and out. Across the street from us, in front of the police station, you go to park there and there's a sign that says Amtrak only. Okay, so you got to pull out of there because you don't want to tie up Amtrak. You go to corner of us, catty corner of us, where the medical arts building is, there's a designated parking lot for construction only, the sign says. That parking lot is bigger than my whole lot that my Subway sits on. Okay, but they might have ten, twelve cars in there. I walk it every day. Okay, when I come down to, I'm located at a store on Morganton Road, I come down to Hay Street every day. If it has to bring something to do something, whatever it is that I need to do, I have to park somewhere down the road, and I have to walk to my business, get what I need, and have to find me a place to walk back. My employees only have two hours parking. They get tickets, we have to pay that. Okay? We've lost business. We rely on the customers that come in, so that means I've had to cut hours of employees, I've had to send them home early because we have to be able to stay afloat, which we're trying. We've lost more than fifty percent of our business since this endeavor. Because all we're trying to do is run a small business, have parking where our people, they come in and out. It's not a question where we sit down and we eat and we stay for an hour. Most of our customers have thirty minutes to eat. So that means get in, get your sandwich, get out, go back to work. You know? We all have, when they tore up our parking lot, they said we didn't have parking, we didn't have a lease, it's in our lease. I have a copy of a letter from our franchise headquarters, if you'd like to pass it around.
About our parking situation?
We try, we work with the city. I've come down here numerous of times, and I've talked to everybody and anybody that I can talk to, that will listen to me about our position. We're trying to work. We want the city to grow. We want to grow with it. And I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, what is the plan for the parking for that business? How many spaces are allocated for Amtrak across the street?
There are four spaces allocated across the street for Amtrak. Regrettably, as she mentioned, the Subway and the Amtrak station are somewhat landlocked between the construction site on one side and the railroad crossing on the other. It's not convenient, but there is free and available parking at the ASOM, and there is timed parking in the Medical Arts Building and along Winslow Street. We're aware, and just today, we talked about it. We also have concerns that have come forward from the Amtrak as well for unloading and loading of their passengers, and so we'll be trying to work on that as well. But we are very constrained by the site and the size that we have, but we are aware and trying to make some accommodations.
All right. Keep us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Dr. Shari Deldo.
Hello, I'm Dr. Shari Deldo. I'm Mr. Mayor of Fayetteville. City Council members, thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I'm here talking about the widening of our zero-point-nine mile stretch of Clifdale Road. Can you hear me? Yes? Okay. I have lived in Fayetteville twenty-seven years on this urban, two-lane, minor thoroughfare of this zero-point-nine mile stretch of Clifdale Road, and I'm an emergency room doctor. I've been working in Fayetteville and surrounding communities for twenty-nine years. And I own three and a quarter acres and two homes on that uncongested safe, family-oriented residential neighborhood, do I have a cheer for that? And located on the eastern end of Clifdale Road. I raised five children there, and now I have a family. My daughter's there with four grandchildren, and I have another daughter who's on the same street who has a house, too. So I'm here because I oppose the NC DOT feasibility study from two thousand, one twenty-four, two thousand, you have a paper. The NC DOT feasibility study backs the reason for widening the zero-point-nine mile stretch of Clifdale Road. It goes from McPherson Church to Morganton Road. And the feasibility study states that the purpose of the project is to increase the traffic carrying capacity and the safety of Clifdale Road. But the opposition facts are out there in the literature, so I researched them. And so number one, in the American Economic Review, there's a article titled "The Fundamental Law of Road Construction: Evidence From U.S. Cities," and it says that increasing lane kilometers for one type of road diverts very little traffic from the other types of roads. This result suggests that increasing the provision of major urban roads is very unlikely to relieve congestion of these roads. So this, it's a very lengthy article, it's like fifty pages. So these economists did this study, and the result did not support the claim that adding highway capacity is a key to helping reduce traffic congestion. And the second article from Street Blog entitled "More Highways Equals More Traffic: Why the DOTs Aren't, Are Ignoring It," and they talked about induced demand. If you build highways, more drivers will come. So the key there was for every one percent increase in highway capacity, you actually increase the flow of traffic on that road. So the important finding that is that the highway planners are failing to incorporate this induced demand effect into the transportation infrastructure analysis. It means they're throwing money for highway expansion when the roads just become more congested later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Stephanie Green.
Hi. Stephanie Greenberg, and I live at three-three-one-six Clifdale Road. And I'm talking about the widening of Clifdale Road also. And I am opposing it. I don't think it's necessary at all. I've lived on that road for years, almost thirty years. We've been on Clifdale Road. And I understand to the right, when you get off All-American, to the right, to the west side, that's where all the cars are going. That is your backup. I see it every day when I come home from school after dropping off my kids and when I come back home with them. So at three o'clock, five o'clock, the traffic's heading west. It's all going right. It's not going left, which is our street. I have pictures on my phone of the traffic, how many lanes, the two lanes going to the right. So I think they need to take that into the study. Right now, on our street, there's, I understand it's not you guys, it's the DOT that's counting the cars that are on our street that's happening, but Murray Hill Bridge isn't fixed. There's five hundred houses in Van Story alone. And all these homes, they're having to send people down Clifdale Road if they even want to go to Rayford. So you're having an increased traffic flow right now on Clifdale Road. So doing any study right now before that bridge is fixed is going to be inaccurate. Those cars will not be driving down that road once the bridge is fixed. So that's one. Also, if the road is increased, I went out today and walked the distance of forty feet. The house on the corner of Herndon and Clifdale, it will be touching his driveway. Now, his driveway is on Herndon Road. It's not even on Clifdale. But when you come back forty feet, you're touching his driveway. So you are a car's length from his house. That's right next to the Fayetteville Academy. So that's how much road that they're wanting to take on Clifdale Road. Also, I went to Campbell University to do statistics there. When you learn about city planning and everything, you want to send people where the money is so the city can get tax money. So if you keep people on Morganton Road instead of on Clifdale Road, you will increase your income into the city because you're going to be sending people down Morganton Road, and right in front of them is the Food Lion. And hey, turn right, let's go out to dinner tonight. All the food's to your right. You've got Olive Garden, Joe's Crab Shack, Carrabba's. I mean, that's where you're going to get your taxes, your tax money comes in from them. All their liquor sales, I know, that's a ton of money. So, I mean, if you let people go down Clifdale, honey, we're almost home. Let's just, you know, hey, let's skip all this, kids can't see food, they're quiet. You know, you can make it home faster on Clifdale Road if it was a four-lane road. Sure, but will the city increase money? I don't think they will. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marjorie Otten. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Marjorie Otten. I live at thirty-two oh three Clifdale Road. In nineteen seventy, my husband and I retired from Fort Sill, Oklahoma. We came to Fayetteville to make our home, and we found a home that we could afford. At that time, we didn't think we could, but we did find a home we could afford. My husband, at that time, with FTCC, opened his own business, AC Service Company, and worked there for many years. And then he had the opportunity to become a city employee. He was Assistant Superintendent with the Inspection Department in Fayetteville. He worked there for twenty-one years. He retired from the military with twenty-one years. We have made our home at that address for many years. We would like to continue to live there. When I say "we," I mean me. My husband passed away. I'll let someone else speak.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Cliff Brison.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Cliff Brison, and I'm Fayetteville-born and bred. My parents moved to thirty-one twenty-five Clifdale Road in nineteen sixty. I lived there till about nineteen eighty. My dad's still living, and he still lives there, and Ms. Otten is his neighbor. So we've got quite a bit of experience living on Clifdale Road. Just started out farm fields and woods and then residential, and of course, it's got, Fayetteville Academy came in about nineteen seventy or so, and of course, there's McPherson Presbyterian Church as well. My observational experience is that traffic in the morning is probably the worst time on Clifdale Road when people are going to school and they're going to work. But even my dad says that from his observations, if people are turning left into the Fayetteville Academy during the morning, the backup is maybe most about five cars at any one time. The other peak traffic time would be in the evening when people are going home and headed westward. My concern is that over the years, I've observed DOT, and usually what DOT wants, DOT gets. And the project that I read about in the newspaper is just way over the top. It's just, I mean, it's just going to leave nobody with any room in their front yards. Perhaps a better solution might be a three-lane road where there's a turn lane so that traffic could go each way unimpeded. And that seems to me to make the most sense if DOT is determined to do something, and that would still help maintain a healthy traffic flow. The other thing is if you expand it to four lanes like they're talking about, I believe that the actual speed is going to be much faster than thirty-five miles an hour. In this town, as you all know, I'm sure in the police department can tell you that nobody goes to speed limit. And if you ever go down Morganton Road, some of those stretches, it's just like a drag strip sometime, and I would be afraid that the same thing would happen to that section of Clifdale Road if it were expanded up to four lanes. So we just would ask that the DOT would take into consideration that the fact that this is still a residential area with the very prominent school right there on Clifdale Road, and so that they would not increase the traffic hazard, but rather maintain the residential integrity of this area. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Ms. Pam Samuels. Ms. Pam Samuels. Not here. Mr. Rick McDowell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor of the Fayetteville, the All-American City we call Fayetteville. City Councilman, ma'am, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and our FYC, FCYC member, I guess he left, our future in this world. Thank you very much for tonight. My name's Richard McDowell. I'm at sixteen-ten Red Bud Drive in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I am the North Carolina State Coordinator for the Run for the Wall. It's a POW MIA Remembrance Run. We are heading out next Wednesday, or excuse me, this Wednesday, from California, coming across the United States of America in ten cities, three routes, one mission, a total of thirty cities, to remember those who cannot ride. That means the ones we left behind. There's a mother and a father, a sister, a brother, an uncle, an aunt. Wakes up every morning, has a cup of coffee, a Mountain Dew, or just a cup of water, looks out the window and says, where's my Billy? Where's my Leon? We left them behind, and we need accountability. That's what these members do. They're volunteers. They spend about seven thousand to eight thousand dollars in ten days coming across this great nation of ours, and it's incredible time. So the thirtieth anniversary for the Midway Route coming from Los Angeles, California, on the eighth day is going to be Fayetteville, the All-American City, and I'm proud to be the North Carolina State Coordinator for that. We are going to support, and most importantly, our first responders, and most importantly, our government that protects us when we're gone, our families. And that is the most righteous thing that I could possibly say about this council and our past, but most importantly, our citizens that are sitting out here that protect us too. Thank you very much from all our military. It is an honorable day for this. It's going to be the twenty-third of May. We're going to come in to Fayetteville. Leading the pack is going to be the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department with the escort of the Fayetteville Police Department and Spring Lake Police Department. It's an incredible sight. It's going to be over five hundred motorcycles screaming right down the hill, right here, coming downtown Fayetteville, not screaming. It'll be loud, but I want to thank this council, this honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, sir. But most importantly, the city and the Fayetteville residents for allowing us to be able to be here today, and most importantly, to honor America and those who cannot ride. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. God bless.
Mr. Douglas White?
Mayor Colvin, city council members. My name's Douglas White. This is my wife, Carol. We live at 3002 Clifdale Road. My wife and I have lived at 3002 Clifdale Road for 25 years. I'm a proud Navy veteran, and I came back to make Fayetteville my home 39 years ago. We love Fayetteville and all the positive changes that have been made throughout the years. The Clifdale Road widening project is not a positive change. We didn't need it in 1993, and we don't need it now. We don't have a traffic problem, so please don't fix it. Please fix the Mary Lake Dam and time the traffic lights. Morganton Road is a perfectly good five-lane road that is parallel to and is one street over from Clifdale Road. It can handle all of this area's future traffic needs, but it's just not being utilized like it should be. Please don't waste the good people of North Carolina's hard-earned tax dollars, between 14 and 16 million, on a .9-mile stretch of neighborhood road. If you want to see what our beautiful neighborhood would look like, please look no further than Glensford Drive in Montclair. It's awful and shameful. My parents bought a home in Montclair back in the early '70s, and my mom still lives there. I witnessed the entire project. And as I said before, it's awful and shameful. My wife retired from FTC two years ago. She drove back and forth to work for 15 years with no problem. I have driven toward Haymount to and from work for 25 with no problem, and I still do. We moved here 25 years ago because this is a great neighborhood, and we want to spend our retirement years here. Please don't destroy mine, my wife's, and our neighbors' dreams. I pray that God would give you the wisdom to make the right decision. Your decision will greatly impact all of our lives in this community in a positive way or a negative way. Please make it positive. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Bob Coxwell?
Been a long time since I had a chance to say, "Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council," but it's a good feeling. Can you put a flash drive in this thing? Can I do that? Can't do it. The picture's worth a thousand words. I would encourage each of you to go on the county's GIS. The right-of-way on Clifdale Road from Morganton all the way down to where it starts downhill past the academy is already 60 feet. It doesn't end at the edge of the pavement. The pavement's probably only about 30 feet wide. It goes 10 to 15 feet each side of that end of that pavement. If you look on the north side, I'll give you a good example. Greg's Hedge is the right-of-way. The young man, the young couple that built the little nice white pillars with the rails, that's the right-of-way line. So think of what you're going to do to those yards. I support my brother, Cliff Brison, here at the bar. I think of three lanes with a turn lane in the middle is all that's necessary to solve the problem. It's twice a day. When the people are coming to the academy, that's it. If you look at the accident counts, I'd be willing to bet you that the major accidents are at the intersections of McPherson Church and Morganton, and Clifdale, and Morganton and Clifdale. In between, I just don't think there's that many accidents. I agree with Cliff. If it becomes four lanes, you go stand on McPherson Church Road any night at the intersection of Clifdale and McPherson Church, the noise is deafening. That's four lanes with the turn lane in the middle. They come off of, coming off the expressway, if they catch the light, and they don't have to stop for that light at McPherson Church, they're still doing 45. It changes to 35 right there. But not going down that hill, you can stand there and hand out tickets all night. It's not going to change from that speed, and four lanes is just going to make it worse. I've lived across from the academy, student parking lot for 10 years, and I live one lot off of Clifdale now on Overton Place. And I've lived there not as long as Cliff's family has, but I've lived long enough to know it's a residential street. The only thing, only, that's not residential is the school and the church. You put four lanes in a median strip, think about on Sunday when that church lets out. It can only go one way, right. The academy can only go one way, right. I encourage you, if I agree with Cliff, and the DOT says they're going to do something, they're going to do it. And so we've got to live with something out there. Three lanes with a turn lane in the middle, I think, is all that's necessary. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. Can we discuss or respond? Do you want to wait till everybody's done speaking, and then we can explain what our plan is?
Yeah, we typically don't respond to in this section, but we'll see. There's quite a few of our constituents that are here tonight, so may have some brief remarks depending on how quick we can wrap it up. All right.
Mr. Lester Bussey?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. My name is Lester Bussey. My address is 673 Stony Kirk Drive in Fayetteville. I am here to speak in support of a candidate selection that represents the decision that the voters of District Two made November 6, 2017. They had a choice, had many choices of candidates during the primary and the election day in November. Through their votes, their decision, Mr. William was a Democrat, a black male. They could have selected a Republican and chose not to do so. Therefore, in keeping with their decision, the person should be a Democrat, secondly, a minority. To do, other than that, I have stated, will not be in keeping with the wishes of District Two voters who made their selection on November 6, 2017. Also to select a candidate, other than I have stated, might fulfill your personal wishes, but it will not be keeping with the wishes of those who voted in District Two. Mr. Mayor and City Council, this is not personal. This is business. I have the name of a person that I'd like to consider to be a city council replacement. Her name is Ms. Patricia Bradley. I have a copy of her bio if you would like to read it over. I have read Ms. Bradley's bio, and I find her to be very impressive. I find her background to be very credible, and the best fit to replace a minority Democrat back to the District Two council seat. I am extremely happy to endorse Ms. Patricia Bradley, a Democrat, to replace a Democrat, to head all the sequential duties of the City Council District Number Two and meetings. I hope you are interested in the same. I believe Ms. Bradley would be an enthusiastic city person. She can work well with others and also individually. She is really more of a leader than a follower. She can manage and supervise as well. Little to noisest supervision is needed when she is working. She has a reliable work habit that gives assurance to those that she can always count on her.
Mr. Bussey?
Yes. I ran out of time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, the public hearing has been open in excess of 30 minutes. The public hearing has been open in excess of 30 minutes.
How many more speakers did you have?
Probably about 12 or 13.
Well, I typically try to hear from all, as many constituents as possible. Did make exceptions during the PWC input section as well as during some other time. But in the spirit of the rule, it is a council policy that we allocate 30 minutes for this. And so with that, I will have to stick to that. But we certainly welcome your input, invite you to please not be discouraged by the process, and continue to come and speak to us because we need to hear from you. At the end of that, we will... Yes, so I was coming to you for comments. So, Council, very briefly, we'll have probably two minutes worth of comments. So I saw Councilman Dawkins, and then ARP, and Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The plan is we're going to work together as a council to hopefully come up with a unanimous resolution against the widening project on Clifdale Road. Now, we're going to do all we can, and it's going to take you all also. But the state is the one that's in charge of this project. And in 19... Somebody mentioned 1993. That's exactly right. '93 and '94, when they put the interchange in, we said, "Do not widen that two-lane section of Clifdale Road." We were able to stop it. A lot of you all came out and spoke against that. We'll probably have to do that again, so just be ready. We hear you. We're hoping that maybe they can put two turn lanes off of Clifdale onto McPherson going north. That would help, and possibly two turn lanes. What we want to do is keep people off of Clifdale Road if we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman ARP. I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's important that we continue to have your support on this. I'll be submitting a council action memo the first week of June at our work session to ask for a formal resolution. And then I hope to get the full support of all the council on that resolution. And the idea is to encourage NC DOT to keep that traffic on McPherson Church Road and on Morganton Road. Those roads are designed for that traffic. Clifdale's not. And I don't think $16 million for nine-tenths of a mile is a good expenditure. But again... But again, the key point is, this is an NC DOT issue. It's not our issue. We're not a decision-maker, but we're going to try to have a voice in this, and we'll need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman ARP. Councilman Chris?
Mr. Mayor, to the residents of the Clifdale community that did not get to speak tonight, I heard you by your presence. I don't need to hear your words. Your very presence speaks to us about your dissatisfaction with what North Carolina DOT is trying to do to a residential neighborhood. So for those that didn't get to speak... For those of you that did not get to come to the podium and speak, you did get to speak by your very presence here in these chambers. Mr. Mayor, I would say this, that if we have persons other than for the Clifdale issue, we ought to at least give them an opportunity if they're those here.
I agree with that.
But for you from Clifdale, thank you. I'm with you.
All right. Great idea. I think that as they registered, they did put the topic of conversation. So if it's other than Clifdale, Madam Clerk, if you can give me a count on that, I'll go to Mayor Pro Tem Moan and Wright, and we'll wrap the comment. This exceptional comment portion up.
Yes, in reference to the .9 miles on Clifdale, myself and Councilmember Wright, we're part of the Transportation Policy Board under the Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, where some of these projects come to, and your first one back in the '90s. We have a meeting next week, and based on Councilmember ARP and everybody else's input, if we can get that council resolution during our June work session, then Councilmember Wright and myself will take the council resolution before the Transportation Policy Board, which then goes and feeds into the state. And Mr. Rob Stone, you'll hear from our city staff. We talked about that before the meeting tonight. And so step one, get the resolution. Step two, we understand the right-of-way is supposed to be purchased in the 2022 timeframe, construction in 2024. We work on a five-to-10-year plan. And this is, you know, not just Fayetteville. It's Hope County, Fort Bragg, Spring Lake. It's all over. And so we might have a little influence where if they're going to build it, we could potentially keep it to three lanes versus four lanes with a divider down the middle. So we will continue to work, but we're dealing with NC DOT. So that's how it works.
Thank you. And Councilmember Wright, final comment. And then we'll call those other five persons speaking items other than Clifdale.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Moan spoke the sentiments of my heart. And based upon what I've heard tonight from the residents, earlier on in our six o'clock dinner meeting, Councilman ARP spoke eloquently on his desire to put that forward that we might sign in going forth. And tonight, I mean, if you're from Clifdale Road area and you're here and have not spoken, I have already been sold on the fact that we don't need to widen that road. And given a unanimous vote from the council, taking that to DOT and sitting on fan poll, I think we would have the influence to influence those state legislators as well that that's not a good idea for the city of Fayetteville and residents of Clifdale Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Thank you all for your input. And also, I would encourage you, in addition to the city council's advocacy, to please touch your state representatives. They are a delegation, and they represent all of us in Raleigh, and we need to press that also. All right, Madam Clerk, can you count all the other remaining?
Mr. Mayor, we have five speakers that are not for Clifdale.
If those that were here for the Clifdale, if you would like to leave, you're certainly welcome to stay. You can do so at this time. As Madam Clerk, at the end of that, if you can call the other speakers.
No, we're not doing any more Clifdale ones. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, you were going to be the next one. That has no bearing on how we have our speakers. England?
I'm good. Good to see you. Good to see you. Thanks for coming out.
Okay, let me tell them.
I was doing non-Clifdale rights, I just told Mrs. Ortiz she couldn't.
All right, Madam Clerk, we will reconvene. If you can call your next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Charles McKeller. Mr. Charles McKeller.
Welcome, sir.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Charles McKeller. My address is 313 Wareham Court in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here to speak in support of a selection process, as a previous guest spoke, Mr. Bussey, concerning the decision that you will be asked to make in selecting a candidate for District Two to replace Mr. Williams, who was selected by District Two voters in November the sixth, two thousand seventeen. And as Mr. Bussey said, the voters in District Two had a choice between many candidates during the primary and on Election Day. And through their wisdom, and through what they wanted for their representation, they chose Mr. Williams. And Mr. Williams happened to be a Democrat and a black male. They could have selected a Republican because he was running against Mr. Dan Corfman. Or they could have had a write-in candidate. But they chose not to do so. So therefore, in keeping with the decision, the person should be first, a Democrat, and second, a minority. So I hope that you select a person for District Two that reflects their decision in November of two thousand seventeen. To do otherwise, will not be in the keeping with the wishes of the voters of District Two. Now, some might say, and some of you might say, "Well, this is nonpartisan." I don't, there's no such thing, and I can say that for most of you on the council, I'm probably much older than you. And as long as I've lived in this country, there is nothing at the local, state, or federal level that is nonpartisan. Whatever party wins, they elect, they get their judges that have the same kind of belief system and wishes that they would serve. Just look at the Supreme Court. Whatever president is there, they will select a Supreme Court justice that's a lifetime position.
I've got thirty seconds.
Okay, that's a lifetime position. So the nonpartisan issue can only be used as an excuse. So I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. And remember, in your selection process, that we are watching, we are listening to what's said, we are listening to your actions. And remember, you will be up for reelection come November next year.
Ms. Gail Aariki?
Hi. My name is Gail Rocky. I live at...
Can you pull the microphone down?
I live at four-seven-zero-seven North Gale Circle in Fayetteville. We, Pavers Unlimited, are representatives of the VRC and six hundred twenty-six other blind folk of Cumberland County, are thankful for the assistance we are receiving concerning fast-track issues. We would like to thank you, the city council, for allowing us to speak with Jay Reinstone, Reinstein, to note our concerns. We look forward to working with Veronica and Tiffany on our concerns. Roz Moore is guiding Mini Bernardo, a retired blind veteran, to pass out T-shirts in appreciation for our continued partnership. We thank you, the Vision Resource Center.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Quince Lanford?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to know, if there was any issues with the transit, with the blind, if there's any issues that they brought up, or it was just the recognition? They were just thanking us? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Quince Lanford?
Hello, how y'all doing?
Hello.
My name is Quince Lanford. You are some retired. This is my wife, Sandra. I live at seven-fourteen Emerald Drive. I come at you with a compliment and not a complaint. We on, from the Vision Resource Center, would like to thank the city engineer for the placement of a chirping bird traffic light signal at the intersection of Pamley Drive and Kane Road. We also look forward to working with him in reference to placing other chirping bird signals, traffic light signals throughout the city. Jesus said, "The poor you have with you always." Well, we said, "For the blind, you will have what you always." And we are the all-American city, and we look forward to becoming a beacon of light for others to follow. Once again, we want to thank you, and tell you, job well done.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted him to explain what a chirping bird light is for the viewing public. I know what it is, but I'm not sure all of our viewers...
Educator stands, Sergeant Major.
Come on, let him do that. You talk about the chirping bird light, tell them, tell the viewers of Fayetteville what you're talking about.
Yes, sir. A chirping bird light signal is used for the originally parent of the blind to be able to cross the street, the intersection, being that we don't have sight. Once the light turns green, we can't see that. So the bird, when we hear the birds start chirping, then we know that gives us our cue that we can cross the street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
Ms. Roberta Waddell? Ms. Roberta Waddell? Mr. Lester McGuire? Mr. Lester McGuire?
Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, I'm Lester McGuire, and I am at five-twenty Martin Road, which is off Deep Creek Road. Please let it be known that a group of approximately thirty residents of District Two of the city of Fayetteville met at Walker's Five and Recreation Center on May tenth, two thousand eighteen, to establish guidelines for selection of a candidate to serve the remainder of the term that began in December of two thousand seventeen and will end November of two thousand nineteen. By organizing the electorate of this district, we hoped to convey to the Fayetteville Mayor and city council that we will support a candidate that agrees to the following items. The candidate will agree in writing to vote for and support keeping the multi-sport complex that was selected for the passage of the Fayetteville Parks Bond located on Fields Road. We also would like a commitment from council for economic development around the complex. The candidate will fill the vacant seat of the Fayetteville Parks Bond Subcommittee. The candidate will do its best, their best, to represent the interests of District Two in all their decisions involving the Fayetteville Parks Bond, and keep the constituents abreast of development with the Fields Road complex and any else pertaining to this district. The candidate will quickly familiarize themselves with the inner workings of the project home run, and all emails, audio, and video of all meetings involving the ballpark and surrounding development. They will be completely briefed on the status of the development partners and Houston Astros by city staff, and pass along the findings to the people. Also, let it be known, the District Two residents would like to interview the applicants for the District Two... For District Two seat, and make a recommendation to council on who we think is the best candidate for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no more speakers.
All right, well, thank you all for your commitment tonight. Remind you that meeting will be in your district tomorrow at seven PM. Look forward to it. I will bring with me the calendar that the city council has outlined. Application deadlines are this Friday by five PM. Anyone interested should submit that application to the city clerk's office no later than Friday at five PM. So look forward to the discussion. Thank you for hanging in here with us, and certainly you're welcome to continue to join us to the rest of the council meeting. This time, we'll close the public forum. Madam Clerk? Counsel, we move to, we were on a hard line for a break, but it seems that many of us have taken that anyway, so I guess we'll keep moving. Item nine-point-zero-one, comprehensive pedestrian plan. Mr. Stone?
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. This item before you is approval for the comprehensive pedestrian plan. I'm going to introduce our engineering consultants from Stan Tech, Mr. Scott Lane and Ms. Michelle Peel. They've been before you before to offer some of the information. So this is the last stage of this, and we'll be asking for your approval.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the city council here for all of your work. This is not the first time you've seen or heard me talk about the pedestrian plan, far from it, actually. We've been together a few times, and you've asked a lot of questions. We've tried to work into the plan. So I think, thank you for your time and your participation in this project. The process, which again we've outlined, is fairly involved, started right out a year ago, April two thousand seventeen. This project is funded in part by the city and in part by the state DOT. A couple of public meetings, we heard a lot of things, all of our outreach activities online and the public meetings, better lighting, improved crossings, more sidewalk connections, and more people walking. I've said it before, and I'll say it one more time, when we are out there looking around Fayetteville, as we do a lot in these projects, there's a lot of people walking in your city, a lot of people walking in your city. So this project, I think, is be well-used. The plan answered several questions. Where do we want to go? What are recommended pedestrian improvements to get us there? And, you know, how can the plan be implemented? What's the financing? What part of this is the city's? What part is the state? What part is private sector or grants or other sources? The recommendations that are in the plan, and there's a lot of them, I'll go over very quickly, came from a lot of different places, from the public and from our steering committee. I should thank the steering committee, they attended a number of meetings with us. Pedestrian safety, of course, crash reductions, a huge one, access to schools, parks, shopping, business centers, households living at or under poverty, and connections to transit were all factors that they wanted to consider, and we did consider in our recommendations. The draft plan, and its draft until you tell us it's not, is a network of sidewalks, intersection recommendations to make those crossings safer and easier, and then funding options, and you'll see that throughout the plan. Our schedule, we try to make our recommendations, short-term, easier projects, midterm and long-term. Quite frankly, it's getting into public work, Celebration Week, and we had our time keeping up with your people. They were already working on some of these projects as we were putting them into the plan, so kudos to them. The recommendations, one hundred and eighteen sidewalk projects, forty-three additional miles are in this plan, for a grand total over a period of fifteen or twenty years of twenty million dollars. Sixty-four intersection improvements, total of two and a half million dollars. You're already programming a lot of this money, as we talked about before in previous work sessions with you. So this isn't out of your reach. This is certainly possible. A few highlights, these are just examples of projects that we pulled out that are in the plan. They're not in priority order, but we did kind of give people an idea visually of what these projects really look like. So what's left for us? It's tonight. It's hopefully seeking your approval, answering any remaining questions. And again, thank you. We were in the holding pen across the aisle, and we were reading your Vision twenty-two twenty-seven. And the vision statement for this city is "An attractive, culturally diverse city with a rich heritage that is peaceful, prosperous, and connected." And those were things we really kept in mind as we were developing your pedestrian plan. Thank you again for all your time, all your efforts, and your attention to this, and I and the staff, thank you to the staff, ready to answer your questions.
All right. Do you have a question, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stan Tech engineer, is that you?
I was looking for the voice came from.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing. Explain the funding options so that I have a better understanding. a better understanding, please.
Sure. So we discussed several funding options in this. Some of these projects are on state streets, so as they get repaved or widened or intersection improvements transpire, those happen. Some of these projects are probably going to be associated with private sector redevelopment as new projects come in on greenfield acreage or the properties get redeveloped. That's one great reason to have a plan. The developer knows what they're supposed to be doing in front of their property. And then there is a portion of this that is left to the city to do, to fill in the gaps, and the staff can correct me if I get the number wrong, but I think you've been spending historically somewhere between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars roughly each year, anyway, to do pedestrian projects. So those are the main sources. Grants, some things like that, kind of fill in the gap sometimes. Is that okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, there was some mobilization grants that was with NC DOT. I've asked our engineering department about it. Are you familiar with those grants? I understand that there are resources available that is given to each DOT district to assist in pedestrian items or something that may fit into your plan. Was that a part of your scope of work to find resources for us?
Part of it was to find resources, and I think you, Mayor, had also talked about the mobilization funding before. I'm, I know of it. I'm not sure how it's being applied in this city. I don't know if you guys want to try to answer that better than I can. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we currently have three projects that's funded through the Transportation Alternatives Program that's passed through, selected by FAMPO and passes, the funds pass through DOT, as well as there's a mobility fund, and there's also a fund that we were made aware of here recently that DOT will be appropriating some money for, and that is for specific pedestrian mobility projects. It's a relatively new type funding stream, so they're a little unsure exactly how it'll be appropriated at this point, but we will be applying for projects identified in this plan to that program.
Okay. Thank you. Have a couple of other questions. Councilman Arp and then Wright?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make a motion once we're ready.
Okay. Councilman Wright, and then I'll come back to you.
I just wanted to ask you a question. Understanding the recommendations, you had here pedestrian safety, activity, schools, parks, shopping, business centers, et cetera. Just wanted to make a comment about, you know, pedestrian activities throughout the city, and I've been to larger cities, and we see green space in a lot of these places that makes it more, you know, advantageous for people maybe to come shop where they can rest and sit, you know, like a bench or park, and even where they just go and walk during the day in the shopping complexes was right there. I thought it was very, very nice, given the amenities for pedestrians, not only with sidewalks, but like the parks and the shopping. What kind of ideas do you guys have in the near future to make Fayetteville a better place for pedestrians as far as green space?
That's a fantastic question. So the projects that we looked at in here are largely pretty much nuts and bolts sidewalk extensions and making crossings safer in the great majority. In the design part of the plan, which I hope doesn't get overlooked in years to come, there is some, a lot of mention, actually, about incorporating green space. And there's some ideas for pilot projects, like actually a technique called a woo-nurf, which-
A what?
A woo-nurf. It's a German term, a Netherlands term, actually, that talks about basically incorporating plantings and green space actually in into the edges of the street. So there are a number of pilot projects that we suggest that incorporate those kind of concepts. One of the things we also recommend is looking at your policies about private development and how they connect. Parking lots can be a tremendous barrier for people between the sidewalk and the front door of an establishment. If it's crossing a sea of hot asphalt like it was today, ninety degrees, it doesn't happen very often. So thinking about how that design works in the private sector side is also really important. The plan does talk about design kinds of considerations for that. A lot of our stuff, though, was kind of in the right way.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, and then coming to you, Councilman Arp for action.
And mine's more of a recognition and a thank you for the previous times you both came, you know, to city council work sessions, you know, briefed us along the way, you know, the partners here in Fayetteville, FAMPO, NC DOT, Cumberland County Schools, the Fayetteville Police Department, you know, and the steering committee. So it really was a collaborative effort, you know, looking at a lot of different data points, which are important for your final recommendations. So I just, just want to say thank you. I'm ready to vote affirmative.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Councilman Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it pleases the council, I would move that we adopt the comprehensive pedestrian plan as presented this evening.
Is a motion by Councilman Arp, second by Councilmember Wright, any discussion on the motion? Okay, council, look to you for votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from those present. Thanks, sir. Item nine point zero two, recommendation of fiscal year budget twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, setting of the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
And as Mr. Hewitt is getting ready, certainly we know that this is just a presentation, and so we'll go a little deeper in the depth on Thursday with the scheduled budget meeting. So, council, maybe we can keep that in mind during the presentation.
We don't need to talk. Counsel, in accordance with the requirements of the local government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, myself and his staff are very pleased to present to you and the public here the proposed budget for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen for the city of Fayetteville. The more than two hundred and thirty-five million dollar total funds budget with a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars of that being in the general fund, this represents a one point two percent increase in the general fund over the adopted budget for FY two thousand and eighteen. To support this budget, we recommend that the tax rate remain at forty-nine point nine five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, and this, including the financial plan for the risk management and internal service fund as well. In developing the budget, we take a look at council's targets for actions, which you established earlier this year. The targets for action that the council adopted are develop a unified street plan, develop an internship program, review options for outsourcing waste management, develop options for young adult engagement programs, and develop MSD options for concentrated retail areas in our city. The next section of the budget presentation, we have aligned the activities in the proposed budget around your goal areas, and you, as you recall, have six goal areas, the first being safe and secure community, number two, a diverse and viable economy, three, high quality built environment, four, a desirable place to live, work, and recreate, five, sustainable organizational capacity, and goal six, resident engagement and partnerships. Under goal one, safe and secure community, the staff proposes that a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars be allocated to evaluate the public safety facility needs and options for a bond referendum in two thousand and nineteen, general fund, general obligation bond referendum in two thousand and nineteen, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for a second set of turnout gear for all firefighters for health and safety reasons. It also adds a system analyst position for nine-one-one call center and a database management, and for database management, rather, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for equipment enhancements for fire, police, and thirty thousand dollars for police training center improvements, twenty-five thousand dollars for neighborhood traffic calming measures, and fifty thousand dollars for multi-use lane markings. Goal two, it funds significant downtown redevelopment, including the construction of the downtown stadium and Hay Street parking deck, a hundred thousand dollars for the grand opening of our new stadium. It continues our support of the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Commission, and it also continues a hundred thousand dollar general support for the downtown MSD to transition to an arts and entertainment focused area. Funds one hundred thousand dollars for economic development incentives for the Campbell Soup Facility and continues implementation to support the council's goal of LSDBE and our associated program. Goal three, it provides four point two eight million dollars to resurface our streets, two point two million dollars for stormwater drainage projects, nine hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk improvements, a hundred thousand dollars for intersection improvements, seventy-five thousand dollars for downtown streetscape improvements, and twenty-five thousand dollars for downtown wayfinding signage. Also in goal three, seven hundred thousand dollars for transportation improvement agreements in partnership with North Carolina NC DOT, five hundred thousand dollars for landscaping and irrigation along I-295 interchanges, fifty thousand dollars for installation of sidewalk and other enhancements at the Rowan Street Bridge, fifty thousand dollars for a share of upgrade costs for a computerized traffic signal system, a hundred thousand dollars for landscaping and irrigation improvements on Bragg Boulevard and I-95 Business. Goal four, desirable place to live, work, and recreate. The budget supports First Parks and Recreation Bond issuance planned for FY nineteen, which would include the splashpads, existing park improvements, Western Senior Center projects underway. It would also include the skateboard park and tennis center to commence in FY nineteen. Funds a full year of operating costs for the downtown transit center and Sunday bus service, expands capacity for after-school school programs at three recreation centers and summer camp at eleven centers, a hundred thousand dollars to continue the partnership with Cumberland County to fund strategies to assist homeless citizens, and twenty thousand dollars to fund community signage programs. Goal five, sustainable organizational capacity. It funds continuation of police officer, firefighter, and emergency telecommunications step plans, provides a two percent merit increase for employees not on step plans. It funds required increases for employer contributions for pension and medical benefits, and funds one point three nine million dollars for a variety of technology projects, five hundred thousand dollars to sustained facility maintenance programs, and funds five point seven million dollars for vehicle and equipment replacements, adds network security administrative position, and provides a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for contracted network security services. Goal six, resident engagement and partnerships. The proposed budget also provides a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution to the North Carolina Civil War and Reconstruction History Center, forty-eight thousand dollars to partner with the Friends of the Park for the operations of the Fascinate You Children's Museum, seventy-five thousand dollars for the Airborne and Special Operations Museum, fifty-six thousand dollars for the Arts Council of Fayetteville Cumberland County to partner with community arts programs, and twenty-six thousand dollars to partner with Cumberland County Schools for the Icon Internship Program and continues next phases of city hall renovations, including the first four customer service areas. Under revenue highlights, as I mentioned earlier, the general fund tax rate, the general tax rate proposed is to remain at forty-nine point nine five cents per one hundred dollars of property valuation. The taxable property growth has slowed, as we covered in our first budget work session. The average annual percentage increase in the tax base from January of two thousand and nine to two thousand and seventeen was one point seven-three percent. The estimated growth from two thousand and eighteen original budget to FY two thousand and nineteen recommended budget is point two percent. First-year property tax collections are projected to be sixty-eight million dollars, an increase of point one percent over FY two thousand and eighteen budget, or point zero six, no, point six above the FY two thousand and eighteen projection. This chart actually shows, reflects the current projections of taxable values for various classes of property in our city. For fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the total projected values fall short of the values assumed for the original budget by seven, by seventy-one point three million or point five percent, primarily due to licensed motor vehicle valuations. Original projections assumed continuation of motor vehicle valuation growth of around three point five percent. However, data through the first half of this fiscal year reveals a decline of point two-five percent. Other communities around North Carolina are also experiencing a slowing in motor vehicle valuation growth. The following ad valorem property taxes and sales tax distributions provide the next largest source of funding for the general fund. As we had mentioned before, those, the our property tax and our intergovernmental revenues contribute to about eighty-six percent of our overall revenue structure. And as noted on this slide, we are projected to receive five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars less than budgeted for sales tax distribution for the current fiscal year. As we noted in your budget work session, two factors are impacting sales tax revenues. For sales tax distributed as per capita shares of statewide revenues, Cumberland County as a whole is receiving a smaller per capita allocation because of population growth occurring in other parts of the state. The statewide growth in sales taxes around five percent over prior years. However, our local share is only growing at around four point three percent. For sales tax distributed based upon the county in which the transaction occurred, growth of the prior fiscal year is lagging statewide sales tax growth around two point five percent. For utility tax distributions and revenues across the state have also experienced significant declines in recent quarterly distributions. The general fund intergovernmental revenues, as we had mentioned during your work session, those would include things such as the PWC payment and lieu. It would also include utility tax and other items such as sales tax, pile bill, and the county parks and recreation. The public works contribution for two thousand and nineteen is projected to be ten point nine million dollars or four point nine percent above the current year, and it's based upon electric fund net assets. The economic development payments, which will continue for five years totaling six million dollars, will again be one point two million dollars. Revenue highlights, residential solid waste fee. For FY eighteen, the current fee is a hundred and eight dollars per single-family residential unit. Requires four point six million dollars of operating support from the general fund. The proposal for FY nineteen is to increase the fee to a hundred and ninety dollars per single-family residential unit, an increase of eighty-two dollars per year. The projected general fund support for solid waste services then would be point seven six million solely to fund debt service for prior loans. Additionally, it includes two point five million dollars in planned loan proceeds for vehicle and equipment purchases in the general fund. It also includes four point eight million dollar appropriation from general fund fund balance for non-recurring uses, and a projected available fund balance at the end of FY two thousand and eighteen is twenty-one point three million dollars or thirteen point one percent. As you know, council's policy is ten percent, your goal is twelve percent, and the budget as proposed, the balance above the twelve percent goal is one point six million dollars. Stormwater fee, recommended to increase by point two five, twenty-five cents per month per equivalent residential unit to four dollars and fifty cents per month. The annual equivalent is three dollar increase to fifty-four dollars a year. The twenty-five cent increase in the fee provides roughly four hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year in revenues, and we're proposing that the central business tax district and the Lake Valley Drive MSD remain at their current rates. The transit fare, as we mentioned earlier last, last week, the transit fare is proposed to increase from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty for adult base fare. Other fares and passes would also, are also recommended to adjust commensurate with that increase, and we are also proposing a variety of parks recreation fee increases proposed for use of facilities, youth athletics, summer camp, and after-school programs. With that said, our next steps are that we are looking to hold a third, a second budget work session on May seventeenth, one, an additional one on May twenty-fourth, and the council is set, asked tonight to set the public hearing on the budget for Tuesday, May twenty-ninth.
That says May seventh, but it should say seventeen.
Seventeen. The recommended budget is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk and on the city's website, and SCET- and on the city's website, and council is scheduled to adopt the budget tentatively and the CIP and TIP, along with the strategic plan and fee schedule, on Monday, June 11th. And with that, that is the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Alright, council, do we have any questions before the May 17th budget meeting?
I do.
Councilman Chris.
I beat him to it.
Oh, Mayor Protem, then Councilman Chris.
Right. So, tonight, we're being asked to formally set the public hearing to receive comments on the recommended budget for May 29th, 2018. In our, right here, recommended actions. Set the public hearing to receive comments.
Yes, sir.
And then, we're going to dig deep into this like we did this past Thursday, this coming Thursday.
We'll dig.
Right, we'll dig. Okay, so...
Get your shovels. Councilman Chris.
Mr. Hewitt, the smallest thing you brought up tonight was community signage, $20,000. What is community signage?
As you'll recall, out in your district, there is a Dollar General or Super Dollar that leads into, can't remember the gentleman's name, I apologize, but his sign was down.
Brunson.
And on several occasions, we've explored whether or not our, we would be able to provide a community or neighborhood sign for his neighborhood, but his neighborhood, while it may be low-income, the area in which it is in is not, and so it doesn't qualify for our CDPG DR programs. And so, the goal is that with this amount, we'd be able to have some money to help seed neighborhoods which fall into that category, where, again, the larger area doesn't lend itself to CDPG programs, but individual or spot areas within that neighborhood.
I sent an email to Mr. Newton today on that very subject. That's why I asked. 4.28, 4, 4 million, 208, 28, 4.28 for street resurfacing. I know it's in the big book, but I want the citizen to hear. Did we increase that amount over last year?
Let me see. I'm not sure if I have that in my notes. But generally, what we have done is we have...
Mrs. Royall knows, she's got the answer. We did increase it.
We generally increased it.
I just want the city residents to know that we did increase it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Alright, council, if no further questions, I look to you for a motion to set the public hearing and to accept...
Comment, public input. So, the motion would be to set the public hearing for the 29th of May to receive public input on the recommended budget.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. That was a motion.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Waterill. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, council, look to you for action. Councilman Chris.
Time to vote green.
Time to go. Alright. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from those present. Alright, no further. Let's look to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.